All right, we're gonna get started. If everybody please stand, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Still light out when we got here tonight, so things are changing for the better. But please remember our mission and our vision statements as we go through our agenda tonight and as we make decisions for our district. We're gonna start tonight with the public hearing, probably open that right here at seven, regarding the 2024-2025 school calendar.
On our calendar, there's three things that we'll approve later on in the meeting. I'll highlight those now. Our start date of August 21st, which that's different law change through this legislative session. August 23rd used to be the earliest you could start. Now you can start during the week that has August 23rd. So August 21st is our start date on this calendar. Our end date is May 21st, and this is a calendar based on hours. A minimum of 1,080, we have 1,153.
Looks like staff development's been moved to Mondays, too.
Correct. Staff development has moved to Mondays from Wednesdays.
What was the reason for that? I saw that, too, and I was just curious.
Yeah, we had a lot of families, a lot of community input inquiring about that. We always were on Wednesdays because of preschool. Preschool has moved their day to Monday, so we aligned all of those things together.
So preschool will be like Tuesday, Thursday, or Wednesday, Friday?
Correct.
Okay, good.
You got a lot of questions about four-day school week. We are not planning on a four-day school week.
We are not in a four-day school week. What we've talked about in all of our staff forums that we did is we're always looking at things that are good for kids. We were studying and learning more about the four-day student week. We built a five-day student week for next school year. We'll always continue to study and learn more about the four-day student week or anything that's good for kids.
All right. Any other questions about the calendar while we're in the public hearing from here, or anybody that's here?
The staff development, as you said, is one day per month. Is that what you try to do? Is it one day for four weeks, or what is the...
One day per month, except we don't have one in November when we miss four other days. Otherwise, they are one day per month. We don't have one in March, but we also have a spring break built into this calendar.
You'll see that, March 17th. Yeah, 17th through the 21st.
Which would be the corresponding week to this week in the school calendar for next year.
What is Easter next year?
Down here, April 18th and 20th, or 20th would be Easter.
All right, any other further questions? All right, hearing done, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing here at 7:02. Or 7:03, whichever you want to put, and move into our agenda. We do have enough for a forum here tonight. There's no hearing of delegations. Before we approve our agenda, we have some FFA members with Mrs. Becker to kind of talk about the FFA creed.
We thank you for allowing us to come in. We have two members that have qualified for the state competition. I've got Cassidy Beersett, who's a freshman, will be speaking the creed, and then following her will be Logan Lentz, who has qualified for ag broadcasting. Cassidy, at the end, in her spiel, she says, "Judges, are there any questions?" So if she asks that, if you guys have any questions for her, she's gonna leave immediately afterwards, as she has a jazz band concert tonight. So we're sneaking a couple things in in one shot, so Cassidy, you can come on up.
"The FFA Creed" by E.M. Tiffany. I believe in the future of agriculture with a faith born not of words but of deeds, achievements won by the present and past generations of agriculturalists, with the promise of better days through better ways, even as the better things we now enjoy have come to us through the struggles of former years. I believe that to live and work on a good form or to be engaged in other agricultural pursuits is pleasant as well as challenging, for I know the joys and discomforts of agricultural life and hold an inborn fondness for those associations, which even in hours of discouragement, I cannot deny. I believe in leadership for myself and respect from others. I believe in my own ability to work efficiently and think clearly with such knowledge and skill as I can secure, and in the ability of progressive agriculturalists to serve our own and the public interest in producing and marketing the product of our toil. I believe in less dependence on begging and more power in bargaining, and the life abundant and enough honest wealth to make it so for others as well as myself, and less need for charity and more of it when needed, and being happy myself and playing square with those whose happiness depends upon me. I believe that American agriculture can and will hold true to the best traditions of our national life, and that I can exert an influence in my home and community, which will stand solid for my part in that inspiring task. Thank you.
Mrs. Becker, can you do that?
I can. Maybe not as well, but I learn it every year with them, right?
So I qualified for state for ag broadcasting, and it's a really unique competition, because you don't really know what you're gonna do until you get into the prep room. So it's constructed off of you need a five, or four-minute and forty-five-second to five-minute and fifteen-seconds of presenting, like giving your speech thing. But you get thirty minutes in a prep room, and they hand you a packet with around twenty stories, and you have to put four or five together to create a broadcast, and you have to have a commercial with it, too. So I'll run through mine, and if you guys have any questions after, you're free to ask them. Good morning, Algonah. I'm Logan Lentz, bringing you the latest in agricultural news on KFFA. We have an exciting lineup today, including a quick look at our local weather and a comprehensive look on our future corn, soybeans, cattle, and hog markets. But first, a word from our sponsor. Today's ag broadcast is brought to you by Lentz Hunting Guide Services. To find out more, visit them at lentzhuntingguides.com. And now on with our ag stories. The USDA has released the results of the 2022 Census of Agriculture, and it shows a continued decrease in the number of U.S. farming operations. "I'm concerned about the state of agriculture and food production in this country," Ag Secretary Tom Vilssack said on Tuesday. Vilssack says the decline is significant. In 2017, there were two million farms. Today, the survey reports we have 1.9 million farms. He says the U.S. has lost 20 million acres in farmland in the last five years. The Ag Census data shows also found that U.S. farm and ranches produced $543 billion in agriculture products, up from $389 billion in 2017. The House Ag Committee Chairman Glenn Thompson says farmers and ranchers have faced a number of challenges and need some relief for the next farm bill. During a hearing on Wednesday, he said the farm bill needs to address these issues. Congress can and must craft a bipartisan farm bill that aligns with the farm safety net with the needs of the producers, and expands market access and trade promotion opportunities, as well as strengthen program operations to demand transparency and accountability to the taxpayers. Thompson says lawmakers need to find ways to fund the safety net without making cuts to programs like conservation. Leaders in the Congressional Ag Trade Caucus are encouraging the Biden administration to be more aggressive on trade. South Dakota Congressman Dusty Johnson tells Brownfield all fifty states have something to gain from increased ag trade. Nebraska Congressman Adrian Smith, as well as South Dakota Congressman Dusty Johnson, who are both Republicans, formed the Ag Trade Caucus with California Democrats Jim Costa and Jimmy Panita. Costa says he's looking forward to working together to promote trade policies that will ensure American farmers remain competitive on the global stage. A U.S. congressman from South Dakota suggests the trade with China is not an either-or proposition. Dusty Johnson points out more than half of all soybeans grown in the U.S. are exported to China and says that's more concentrated than he'd like. "I think we need to do a better job of expanding some other markets." Johnson, a Republican who serves on the House Agriculture Committee, says most of his concerns stems from China controlling global supplies of several critical goods, including pharmaceuticals and computer chips. We'll bring you the latest in the markets after this word from our sponsor. Experience the thrill of the hunt with Lentz Hunting Guide Services in Algonah, Iowa. Our expert guides will lead you through the picturesque landscapes. From novice to seasoned hunters, we tailor our services to your skill level. With prime hunting grounds and personalized attention, Lentz Hunting Guide Services guarantees an authentic and successful experience. Book your next hunting expedition with us and discover the excitement of the wild right here in Algonah. Visit us at lentzhuntingguides.com and create memories that will last a lifetime. And now on with the markets. May corn futures are down a quarter at $4.29.5. May soybeans are up eleven and a half at $11.77.5. April live cattle is up $1.77 at $187.37. April lean hogs are up 22 cents at $85.22. May feeder cattle are up $3 at $2.55.90. And now a look at our forecast. Today, sunny skies with highs near 34 degrees, west winds 14 to 20 miles an hour. Tonight, expect clear skies with lows dipping down to 23 degrees, west winds 11 to 20 miles an hour. Sunday, sunny skies with highs near 44 degrees, west winds 6 to 13. Monday, mostly sunny skies with highs near 49 degrees, south winds 7 to 13. Currently, we have partly sunny skies with the Algonah temperature gauge reading 14 degrees, west winds 12 miles an hour. Join me tomorrow as I speak to Secretary of Agriculture Mike Nag on water quality issues and how he plans to solve them. This is Logan Lentz on KFFA. Have a good day.
So there's a lot of professionals that Logan has reached out to. We've used Mr. Nelson here at the high school, Al Luke at KLGA. I don't know, Brian, if you can give him any pointers or not, but they've been really a great asset to Logan, and his broadcasting skills are really, really good. It's kind of fun to see him grow from the first time he did this and getting a packet to trimming it down to finishing it districts in first place. So he's qualified and will perform on the 15th of April, and so will Cassidy, so.
Good job, you both. Great job.
Appreciate the time. Thanks.
Well, is there any interest in broadcasting as a career option?
I haven't really thought of it since, like, now.
But he may be doing some ads for Lentz Funeral Home.
He gonna sing, too?
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice job. All right, looking back at the agenda at this point, we need a motion to approve our agenda. Thanks. Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second, and comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Agenda approved. You should have received the consent items with your packet late last week, and I know we have additional invoices right here. Lisa's put there. If you've had a chance to take a look at them, or if you have any questions or any comments, anybody. We're gonna have a full discussion on that coming up shortly here when we talk about the preliminary budget. Hearing done, I'd need a motion then for approval.
I do a motion to approve the consent items.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent items approved. I will move into the superintendent report here then.
So like Ronnie said, kind of a preview of the budget and the certified budget process. Tonight is not part of the process, and this is just our first chance to take a look at the budget, the work that Lisa and I have put into the last month before our first public hearing, which is March 25th, two weeks from today. There's an added public hearing in the process this year. That would be the first. Then in our April 11th board meeting would be our second public hearing, and also where we will certify the budget. The certified budget is a document showing the amount of taxes levied for each program, as well as revenues and expenditures. The taxes and expenditures are what we certify. Now, there's a lot more that we'll talk about than just simply the tax rate and our total expenditures, but that is just our process of informing the public. The two things that we'll certify is total expenditures and the total tax rate. The certified budget is due by April 30th. It used to be April 15th, and it's now April 30th. Again, you have to have two public hearings now before your adoption. Like I said, we will, there are parts of the process of informing the public. We're gonna inform the public of the maximums we plan to spend for FY25. We're also gonna inform the public of what we, relooking at our FY24, what those will be, and then what our actual expenditures for FY23 are, as well as our proposed tax rates. All of our expenditures are broken into five different categories: instruction, total support services, non-instructional programs, then total expenditure, other expenditures, and total expenditures. Again, we don't approve those as individuals. We approve those as total expenses for a year. Same thing with the property tax. The property tax is something that we certify to the public as a total taxable rate per thousand. Now, we're gonna talk about individual funds, like the management fund, for example, different levies like the PEPAL levy and the cash reserve levy, but what we approve is a total rate, but we will discuss all of the different components that make up the total rate. The, like I said, we'll inform the public, the information we are informing and communicate, and that's part of the process. That's part of the certified process. We're gonna inform the actual revenues for FY23, which is last year. We're gonna talk about the revenues and expenditures for this year and refiguring those, as well as expected revenues and expenses for next year. In the whole process, enrollment is a key factor, because our headcount enrollment is what, you know, creates our per pupil funding, you know, based on the number of people we have. Our headcount enrollment last year was up significantly, because they took the headcount enrollment of Algonah, the former Algonah and the former Laverne, and put those together. So we never really had those kids all in our building last year. So that's the headcount enrollment from October 22. Our enrollment this year is smaller than those two numbers, which we anticipated all along. So as I go through this process today, we're gonna talk about a declining enrollment for the budget for next year, although the number of kids in our building didn't go down that same amount. So that can be confusing, and that's all because they took the counts of two districts and put them together to create our headcount enrollment from the previous year. We're funded by our headcount enrollment, but there's a number of other things that create supplementary weightings and supplementary enrollment. Some of those are special ed. Some of them are supplemental waiting groups that come from reorganization as an incentive. We'll also talk about preschool that are not weighted at 1.0. We only receive a .5 or half of the funding for our preschool. So we're gonna look at all of those supplementary enrollments now. Again, our headcount enrollment, you know, $1,299 up to $1,446. Now, $1,446 never attended here. That is the number when we take Laverne and Algonah and we put it together. This year, we are $1,411, which is accurate, so it's a decline in those numbers of 35 kids. Our special ed weightings, a special ed student is weighted by one point as 1.72, 2.21, or 3.74. So we get funding for one student plus .72, or funding for one student plus 1.72, or one plus 2.74. So we get extra dollars for special education students to provide the support that they need. We do have a decline in our number of kids from the previous year. Once again, that's two districts put together. It's still a decline from the two, but only slightly from 2023 or FY23. Our total supplementary weightings decreased as well, but only by seven students. So a decrease of 4% in our total supplementary weightings. Preschool enrollment is up, the highest it's been in the last six years. It's up by 6.5 to 61 from 55 and 57 the previous year. Again, we receive .5 funding for a preschool student, but an increase of 11.8% there.
Can I interrupt? Sorry. When you say 61, is that really 122, or actual 61s are only getting paid, or...
Yes, 61 is already divided by two.
Okay.
So there's 120-something that are completely counted. Not all of those, we do have Gergen in there, too, who sources more like 100, but yeah, that's already divided. This is the funding number. 61 is the funding number. The number of students multiplied by what each student is worth, we'll just call that $7,600 something, is what creates your spending authority. There are a number of other per pupil components that we get. So the per pupil amount times your headcount, plus your supplementary weighting, plus your special ed. Then there's a number of other per pupil ways that we are funded. One of those is budget guarantee, which that happens. We are on the budget guarantee for FY25. Because of that decline in enrollment, if there wasn't a budget guarantee, we would have less dollars than the previous year. So you get 101% of that, and that's a budget guarantee, so that extra 1% comes from property taxes. So you have that, plus your supplementary weighting, plus your special ed district cost, plus your teacher salary supplement. That's another per pupil amount. It was put in years ago to raise minimum teacher salaries, which they're also looking at doing again for next year. That will come in an increased TSS amount. There's a per pupil amount for professional development. There's a per pupil amount for early intervention. There's a per pupil amount for teacher leadership and compensation, plus your AEA district cost, plus your dropout prevention. All equal your combined district cost, so it's not just your number of kids times the per pupil amount. There's, you increase your number of kids with supplementary weighting and special ed, and then there's another number of other things that are multiplied by your number of kids that give you your combined district cost. So the funding per student is paid for by a combination of things. It starts with one levy, $5.40 per thousand. It's the same in every school district. In the states, it's called the uniform levy, except for Algonah isn't at $5.40 this year, and Laverne's not at $5.40 this year, and that's because of part of reorganization. So our uniform levy, that is $5.40 per thousand for every district, last year for Algonah was $4.90. This year, it's gonna be $5.20. It's a three-year ladder when you reorganize until both us and the former Laverne get back to $5.40. And that's just so the district who is the lower of the two, which in our case was Laverne, so they don't shoot up all at once. They take three different years, and whatever their savings is, we also get that. So our uniform levy is not $5.40, it's $5.24 for next year. It was $4.90 last year. So that $5.24 multiplied by our number of kids fills the bucket up to here. The state then fills the bucket up to 87.5%. So a district like ours, where we have a lot of land and a lot of very valuable land, we fill the bucket up a long ways, a lot farther than maybe a district that has all residential. So we receive less dollars from the state because of our valuable land, up to 87.5%. So any district that is property-rich, if you have a lake, if you have a lot of valuable farmland, that district generates more of their funding from local property taxes. Then the state kicks in to fill it up to 87.5%, then you have 12.5% left at the end, and that's called the additional levy, which then is the property tax again. Now, we don't ever have to have as big of an additional levy, because we have more tax valuations in our land, so our land generates more dollars. General fund components, I talked about the uniform levy, that's the $5.40, but we're lower than that.
Yep. So basically, the amount, the spending authority, or the, that is a fixed, we don't set that.
Everything we've, there...
Is fixed based on pupils, special ed, all the weightings that we do. That's a fixed cost.
That is. Everything I've talked about so far is a fixed cost. We'll now get into a couple areas that we can have or not have or raise or lower. There's five pieces to the general fund. General fund is everything we use to pay for salaries or benefits, to pay people. That all comes out of the general fund. We get those dollars from the uniform levy, from the additional levy, from the instructional support levy, and then cash reserve. And there is two cash reserves, although we really talk about those as one. That's something, that's a levy that we add on. Our cash reserve is equal to what our special ed deficit is, and I'll get into that here in a little bit. But all those five things together equal your general fund levy that you pay people with. Our uniform levy, so the total dollars produced by our uniform levy increased $302,000. Part of the new process that was created by legislation last year is when this happens, we have to say, we have to send something out, we did this a couple weeks ago, that says, "Why did it go up?" Well, ours went up because the uniform levy increased. The tax incentive for reorganization partially went away. As a result, our uniform levy creates more dollars, 5.4% more, $302,000.
That's going from $4.90 to $5.40?
$5.24, because $5.40 will be next year. Yep. Additional, the additional levy increased by $95,000, so a slight increase there to get us the last 12.5%. And then our cash reserve, this is misleading, because again, there's two of them. One of them went up $300,000, the other one actually went down, but together, our cash reserve went up $279,000. Now, again, that is the levy we put in place for our special ed deficit, which is around $1 million. So that's how we pay for that, is with the cash reserve levy. So that's how we pay for people and salaries and everything from the general fund. There are, there is funding that creates part of your tax rate that are not general fund, and we're gonna look at those here quickly. The management fund is one of those. We use the management fund for property insurance. We also use the management fund for retirement benefits. PEPAL, which we use for buses, technology, leases, different equipment. We don't have a Pearl levy. The activity fund is funded through our revenue received from activities, ticket sales, and fundraising. Debt service, there is a debt service in our district. It's from the former Taithanka district, where they had a general obligation bond, and they're still collecting tax dollars to pay for that. The former Laverne, the former Algonah do not have debt service funds. Nutrition funds, which are funded through the federal bunch program and lunch sales, and then sales tax funds, which is a per pupil amount that's distributed to all the schools in the district based on the number of kids you have. We use sales tax funds to build. That's what we're, a revenue bond, our sales tax fund is how we built the middle school, part of the former art center, the gateway, and the new fieldhouse project.
We refer to that as SAVE?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, sales and SAVE, sales tax funds and SAVE is the same thing.
So back when you talked about the special ed deficit.
Yep.
That comes, I'm asking, I guess, I think, that comes about because even with the weighting, we don't cover the cost of the services, so we need to...
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct. Something in the fall that I talked to legislators about, those weightings haven't been changed in almost 20 years, and they no longer produce enough dollars for us to provide the support that our special education students need. If you look, if you dove even farther, the Level 2, 2.21, that's the one where we create the most debt from. But that's what needs to happen. It's now been so long that they haven't increased those weightings, it's really, really expensive to do that. The result is almost all the school districts in the state operate with a deficit and then use property taxes to pay for the deficit.
If they funded it more proportionally, then we could lower property taxes?
Absolutely, and that's a, yeah, if our, if they would adjust... Yeah, if we could get special education weightings adjusted and not operate with as great of a special ed deficit, we could reduce our cash reserve levy, reduce property taxes. Good talking point with legislators, because they don't always understand the weighting that goes into some school funding.
Is that a state or federal thing?
That's a state thing.
That's a state thing?
Yeah, you can increase those levies, or weightings.
We're obligated to provide special ed services, correct?
We are. Yep, that's a federal law that we're obligated to, and we're obligated to do it in two schools. Yep, that's a federal law that we're obligated to, and we're obligated to do it in two schools, two school districts in our community.
I hope you knew that answer to that question.
Yeah. Good for everyone to hear that. Special education services is an obligation that we have for all students who are from our resident district, even if they don't go to our school.
In all needs levels.
All levels. Certified budgets. On the next slide, we're going to look at the amounts. Again, this is part of informing. Our actual expenditures in FY twenty-three, these are actual numbers in the far right column. These are our reestimates for FY twenty-four. And these are our budget numbers, predictions, you should say, for FY twenty-five. And you see that our total other expenditures went up a hundred and fifty percent. That's because of we have the fieldhouse project. So there's an extra twelve point eight million dollars in the bank for the fieldhouse project. So that shows up in our budget for next year. The property tax rate that we're going to propose for those expenditures is nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. And I'll look at that a little bit closer here. So right here, nine dollars and ninety-seven cents, the far blue is what we're going to propose for next year. Last year, it was nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. If you want to take it out to the thousands place, we're reducing property taxes, if you want to look at that far. So this will be the lowest rate that we've had in like the last fifteen years, something like that. Lowest one on this one, for sure. We'll be in the bottom ten percent for top property tax rates again this next year.
And the general fund jumps up so much because of that increase over, from the-
Uniform levy.
The uniform levy.
Yeah, we went from four ninety to five twenty-four, which this increase is actually greater than that. That's because of cash reserve, but we have some reductions, such as right here. We have a twenty, twenty-five cent reduction in the management fund. So our total about the same, nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. So even though, this is a good point, as we're being stewards of our property tax, even though the uniform levy went up thirty cents, we did not raise our tax rate thirty cents. Now, we do anticipate next year it will have to go up as it goes up to five forty, but we were able to not-
Do our values go up? So we're-
Values do, yeah.
Go up a little bit now. So even though our tax rate is going down, your tax feels going to be higher?
It could be. Actually, we used a calculator at a conference we went to. Your total tax dollars paid from the school asking with increased valuations is not higher next year than this year. It is lower. Now, I can't tell you your total taxes are going to be lower, because we're only part of that formula. But for the school asking, it is less next year than this year. It's not very often we're able to say that.
And just why? I mean, I know you just spent the last fifteen minutes, but why? Why is it less? Because we're getting more money from the state, or pupils are going up?
No. A lot of it is, we have more valuation, we have more total land that generates more dollars, so our levies don't have to be as big as they were the previous year, specifically-
Because we inherited Laverne?
Yep. Got more land.
We have a bigger net.
We have a bigger net. We have more thousands to produce dollars, yeah. I know you can't read that, but this is an important thing to show everyone and for us all to understand. Because again, only Algonah has this this year. So if you take all of our evaluations and you divide it by our levies, ten dollars and two cents is the blended rate, okay? No one will have a tax rate of ten dollars and two cents. But this is how the state's program works. It takes all the numbers from the former Algonah, the former Laverne, the former Taithaka, puts them in one and just divides it out, ten oh two. But no one will have a ten oh two. The former Taithaka's rate will be eleven dollars and thirty-one cents. The former Laverne's rate will be nine dollars and sixty-three cents. And the former Algonah's, which is what I've been using to show you, is nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. What's the difference between those three? In Algonah and Laverne, it's the uniform levy. Ours is higher, so the difference is that, thirty-six cents. Here, the uniform levy is the same, but they have this debt service of a dollar thirty-four per thousand that they brought in reorganization. That will expire in two thousand and twenty-seven, then their rate will always be the same as ours. Two thousand and twenty-seven is when we get to one rate. After next year, we won't have these two, and then after the following year, it'll just be one, which will be good. Because this creates a confusion process. We go to conferences, we work on this, we're the only district in the state who has free tax rates. So some of our deadlines, we have to have a publication of our budget ten to twenty days before the official hearing. That was in the newspaper last week. We also have to adopt our budget before the thirtieth. If we had a new Pimple or new instructional support levy or new Pearl, you have to inform or have the election before April thirtieth. Budget guarantee resolution before April thirtieth, we will do that at our April eleventh meeting. Everything to the county by the thirtieth, and then a final budget amendment, no later than May thirty-first. We'll also do that at the April meeting. Budget amendment? Or May, yeah.
We have till thirty-first, so.
So we don't need that one today, but this is to make sure that we certify the budget next month. Lot of information that we start early on, we start in March and we talk about it. So when we get to April, our process to certify is more simple. And the community can talk to us about the rates and any questions that they have.
Any questions through all that? All right. Joe, did you have anything else under superintendent's report?
No, just a reminder that we do have public hearings, both of the next two Mondays at five o'clock. Next week's is for the bidding papers for the Laverne building. And then March twenty-fifth is a public hearing for our budgets. Neither one of those, we anticipate being lengthy things, but we have to have both.
All right. Please put that on the calendar to remember, and I'm sure we'll get reminders. All right, we'll move on then to administrative report.
Do you want a motion to approve?
No.
This tonight?
No.
Not till the twenty-fifth?
Not until the eleventh, actually. April, April will approve it.
Okay. All right.
All right, we'll move then to administrative report. Tonight, we have a middle school RISE time and SEL update.
Yes. So thanks for having us tonight. I'm going to give a brief background on our RISE time. And then I'll turn it over to Megan and Grace, who will do an introduction and go into detail how the teachers are using it in each grade level and classrooms. So our RISE time is developed to create an MTSS structure that provides learning opportunities for all students. We actually started this journey six years ago when we were attending the PLC conference, and we've continued to work on it over the years. Our goal was to always to create a time when all students could receive academic instruction and support at that tier one, two level, along with opportunities to extend classroom learning consistently in our schedule in the areas of math and ELA. We began implementing, and Joe, I won't be using the slideshow.
Okay.
That's for Megan and Grace. They're the creative ones here. So we began actually implementing our current structure three years ago with a basic version. Sometimes we refer to it as RISE Lite. And this version was limited to how many students could actually benefit from it because of scheduling conflicts. We were putting it in the schedule, but we were constantly finding conflicts for students, so we had to rethink it. Starting in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we restructured, we rebuilt our schedule to create this time for all grade levels and all students to have RISE in their schedules, and it's on their infinite campus schedule as well. This time is about thirty, it's a thirty-minute block approximately. Eighth grade, seventh grade is a little bit longer than fifth and sixth grade. And each grade level has three teachers teaching in math and three teachers teaching in ELA. And every student participates in this structure. One of the things we have done after collecting feedback from the teachers, this is our second year of running it, and across the board, the teachers have told us they want it in all our schedules. So when we used to have an early out schedule, a late start schedule, we did not have RISE time. And what we're hearing from our staff is they wanted it in those schedules. So for example, this year, we were able to amend our two-thirty-out schedule, like before holidays, and put RISE into that schedule, and we will have it in our two-hour late schedule for next year. A little more complicated with that because it's a two-hour late start with lunches, but we will incorporate it into that schedule as well. One of the things is we've seen really positive growth and improvements in our students. It's impacted our students' achievement in the classroom, on their ISAP testing. It's really benefited in our classroom instruction. And so we're reaping the rewards of the work that the classroom teachers are doing. RISE time, one of the key components that we've made for this year, a change as well, is RISE time is driven by our leadership teams of our PLCs, which are math and ELA teams that get together once a month. And those teachers come together with administration, Rudy, and myself and Megan, and we're actually planning those times. Before the planning was done with teachers outside of a structured environment, it was good. But bringing everybody together has allowed us to bring consistency through the process and really see some nice changes in our program. So Grace and Megan are going to come up and talk about how that process works.
I need a step stool, guys. Sorry. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what RISE looks like with our PLC structure, that ELA and that math teacher structure. And then Grace will talk a little bit about like what RISE looks like in the classroom. So our PLC structure, like Mr. Roderick said, we meet once a month. ELA will meet for half a day, and then math will meet for half a day. There's four teachers for each. And we have a mission, a purpose, and a goal for that. Our mission is to build a more targeted tier-one, tier-two intervention to help develop math and ELA legging skills in any and all of our students. Our purpose as our PLC is to collaborate, discuss, and decide on five-eight commonalities, really build that scope and sequence during our RISE time. And then our goal is really for students to experience a variety of activities and instructional strategies to accomplish this goal. So in our RISE, it doesn't look the same every day, and it doesn't look the same from one quarter to the next. And that is intentional for our students to try to stay engaged in the process. So two key components in our PLCs. We work very much through a collaboration. We focus completely on the PLC process with the four main questions. What do we want all of our students to know? How will we know if they learn it? How will we respond when they don't learn it? And how do we extend students that maybe already are proficient? So at each of our PLCs, we always talk about those four questions. We bring students' concerns to the table, we bring lessons that we've done to the table, and we really dive into that information to decide, are we doing what's best for our students? Are we hitting the needs we need to? And we really do that with our focus being data-driven. So both of our PLCs, our ELA PLCs and our math PLCs, bring data every month. Grace will show you some of that data. During RISE time, we collect pre-tests, we collect check-ins, we collect post-tests, just to see and make sure what we're doing is working. And there are many times where we look through it as a group in our PLC, and we go, oh, they're not ready yet. And then those teachers, we talk as a group and talk about, how can we reteach that? How can we make sure they're there? And then those teachers go back, and them as leaders, so our math leaders, go back to their two other teachers and help guide what that's going to look like. And they build up lessons, and we reteach them. And really, we do that, so we do use assessments in class, we use our RISE assessments or data, we use teacher observations, and then we use our three times a year testing with A-reading and A-math to constantly change our groups. So we use those four things to make informed decisions about our student grouping. And our student groups will change, we really consistently look at quarterly, but at any given time. So we have teachers all the time contacting us to be like, okay, this kid's ready to move out of this group and move somewhere else, and we change that in their schedule. So what does the RISE time structure look like? Students rotate between RISE, ELA, and math every other day. So basically, if they're in math today, they'll be in ELA tomorrow for RISE. Teachers of each grade are grouped into teams of three. So our team leaders are our math team lead and our ELA, and then they have two other teachers. So it might be a social studies teacher, is an ELA teacher, a math teacher, maybe a science teacher pairs up with that. So our other core teachers and special ed teachers play a role in RISE. Our special ed teachers do not necessarily have special ed students in their RISE. We like to move them around, so those kids get to see a variety of teachers as well. Students are sorted into the RISE times, really based off of those testing. And then we use that data to place students and build those lessons. So as you look in that little schematic there, you can see how our math teacher, we have our math teacher, they do RISE tier one and mostly the tier two. And then our teacher two and teacher three will do predominantly tier-one instruction, and we'll talk a little bit about what that means. So what do those tiers mean? You've probably all heard about multi-tiered systems. There's three different tiers. Tier one is universal supports. That means every student needs it, every student gets a broad understanding of it. It's basically universal instruction, core instruction. Tier two is our targeted interventions, those are students that maybe are not yet legging skills. And then tier three is a more of intensive intervention. We will say our RISE time is geared towards tier-one instruction and tier-two targeted intervention. We are not really a tier-three RISE, and mostly it's staffing issues. We are using all of our teachers available to make tier-one and tier-two as successful as possible. And tier-three, just right now, it's not in our capabilities. Okay, so just kind of talking about our data that we use in our RISE. So kind of like Megan mentioned, we have pre and post checks that we'll do. We'll take our post tests, we look at that A-math and A-reading data, even our ISAS data, and then we look at teacher input and how I'm seeing the kids progress in the math class and what I'm hearing from the teachers about their kids progressing in the RISE classrooms as well. So if you want to click on that link, the RISE math data. This is kind of a look at the data that I've been keeping over the year with the two other teachers that I work with. You'll see it kind of says pre and post, sometimes there'll be a little check-in. And what we're really looking for is, even though we kind of color-code it as red, orange, and green, we're just looking for that growth across the board. So when we take the pre-test versus the post-test, we want to see that growth. At the beginning of the year, we were noticing some issues, so some of our students got moved around based on that data, which is why we do it. If we're not seeing that growth, then maybe they need to leave that tier-one intervention and come down to my tier-two, so that I can really work with them and kind of pinpoint those issues. And again, this is not the only factor we look at. We know some students struggle with test-taking, sometimes they just don't have a good day that day. So this is just a small part of what we look at, but it really helps us communicate to other people what our RISE is looking like and how it's going for us. Okay. And like Megan said, this is used for our grouping and also planning for our next steps. So I will talk about tier one is usually what everyone's getting, me and the other two teachers. And what we're looking to do is first and foremost, front-load our intense curriculum. There's a lot of things that we have to squish into the year. And this RISE time allows us to dive deeper into skills that we don't always get to hammer home. We get to strengthen new and existing skills, things that we do in the classroom. We're allowed to work on more for that thirty minutes in a day, just that extra practice we don't always get. I don't lose content time trying to do intervention for those ten kids that might need that tier-two support. We're allowed to do that in our thirty minutes. And then also for my tier-one kids, it allows advancement opportunities. An example I want to talk about was long division. So I'm sure you all know how to long divide. Our kids do not when they get to sixth grade, and that was a worry we had last year. And so this year, at the beginning of the year, I was able to take two months and teach them how to long divide. And when we got to that unit in math in January, they knew how to do it, and they were able to utilize that skill. So rather than trying to throw it at them in a day, we were able to work on it. And how it looked for my kids who were catching on quickly and moving up, we rose, ris, what is that word? We rose the DOK level, I don't know what I'm trying to say, but increased the DOK level, there we go. So those students were able to do multi-digit long division, decimal long division, harder word problems. Whereas if you click the slide to my tier-two kiddos, we were really just working on those basics. And so the difference is with them is that we have a smaller class with me. It's more self-paced, so whether the higher kids are moving on, me and my kids can take that time and work on what we need to. It gives them more opportunities to succeed in class. For this long division problem, these kids had the ability and the knowledge to participate in class that day, whereas normally, they would have just sat there and stared at me and had no idea-
and had no idea what was going on. So it allows them to grow their confidence and their math skills in a way that we wouldn't normally get to. So, yeah. Mr. Week.
I'm just going to take a minute or two and talk about some updates with our SEL team, which is social emotional learning. That's a team of teachers that are focused on helping students grow and understand emotions and behaviors and things like that. A major part of that, or the way that we do that, is through our restorative practices. We believe when a challenge happens or in any circumstance, rather than looking to punish a student, we look at the harm that was caused and how we can repair that harm. Part of restorative practices are called circles. The students literally sit in a circle, the teacher typically facilitates that, and we have a talking piece, and it moves around, and there's a number of questions that go into that conversation. And what we were finding is that while it's a major component of restorative practices, it was also, we're leaving out a major component of restorative practices, which is student involvement. The students were being told the topics and the questions that they were going to be answering, and they were participating, but they weren't really stakeholders in the situation. So what our SEL team decided was that we needed to bring some of our student leaders into those conversations to help us make better circles, make circles that are more engaging and maybe more relevant to the students and what their needs are. So we had all the seventh and eighth-grade teachers identify one person that they felt like was in their advisory and participated in a really positive way with their circles. And then we took those kids out of class for a day, and we actually spent a lot of time in here, and they did a lot of community building in here, and they did a lot of learning. And at the end of the day, as a group, we had created a bunch of quality circles that the students could be proud of and the students could feel a sense of ownership of, and now those are being implemented building-wide. And our seventh and eighth-grade rooms are even starting to have people lead those circles themselves, so that they're the facilitators instead of just having the teacher. And what we're finding is that that's increasing engagement in the circles. Sometimes circles, they don't have to be the most popular thing, but this allows the students to really own it and care about it more. And when they see their classmates that are friends of theirs, not only participating, but now they're leading the circle, and it's been a really powerful thing, and we like the direction that it's headed, where we're building capacity not just in our teachers and making sure that they are leaders as it relates to restorative practices and SEL, but we're building capacity in our students too. It's been a really great thing. And I just, this was not me, this was our SEL team, this was our teacher leaders that came up with this, and it's been awesome. We really enjoy it. Do you have any questions on any of it specifically for Grace?
No, I appreciate all, hearing about all what the middle school has done over the last few years, it's been tremendous.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
I think it was last year, this complete change of stuff. You spoke about a software that you use for kids to check in and out.
Yeah, e-Hall Pass.
Hey, do you still use it, and is it working well? I mean, I just, that was intriguing to me, and I just was...
Yeah, so that's called e-Hall Pass, and we do still use it. And it's basically anytime that a kid leaves a classroom, they would have to fill out an electronic Hall Pass that the teacher would then approve. And so then, what it helps us do is track how long kids are out of the classroom, so those kids that are habitually out and wandering the halls or whatever, now we know where they're at and how long they've been gone. It also helps us just to make sure that there aren't places that are overloaded with kids that were causing problems or anything like that. We do still use it, and actually, James and I had a conversation where we kind of felt like it had run its course a little bit. We were like, okay, it's more work, for sure, for the teachers to fill out all those passes and stuff. And so we were thinking, okay, so we put it into a circle that we led with staff and just said, where are we at on e-Hall Pass? Is this something? And it was almost unanimous, where everyone was like, no, we got to keep e-Hall Pass. So we are still doing it, we do plan on doing it again next year because the staff wants it, which is great, because it's better for us, you know? And then it's, you know, if somebody causes a mess in the bathroom, and they give me, you know, a half hour of when it must have happened, well, that's cool, because I can click a button and see everybody that used that bathroom within that last half hour. So it's beneficial for us, but again, it's the teachers doing the heavy lifting, so it was fun to watch that they really like the accountability that comes with that.
We were very surprised that they wanted to keep, we thought for sure it'd run its course.
Because it is more work.
It was almost unanimous. My circle had one staff member, and due to the complexity of their program, is why it's very cumbersome for them to use.
I wouldn't want to do it if I were them either.
Yeah. But you understand, otherwise, everybody wanted to keep it. And for us, it's very valuable, we don't do the heavy lifting that the teachers do. It's paid for itself.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for all the updates. Thank you for your time. All right, we'll continue to move on, we'll go to old business, where we have a second reading of policies.
The table in the agenda has board policies 501, 132, 803. As we looked at in our first reading last month, there are no changes, as all of those policies match the current IASB recommendation.
Any question or discussion? If not, we need a motion then to approve the second readings of the policies.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of policies 501.13 through 803.1.
Yep, thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Tom, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Policies approved. New business, we go into first readings.
First reading, policy 502.2, care of school property and vandalism. This policy does not need any changes, it currently matches the IASB policy. The second, policy under review, 502.3, student expression and student publications code. There's four paragraphs that are part of the IASB model policy that should be added to ours. This policy represents the current status of students' First Amendment rights. So that will be something that I will recommend the addition of those four paragraphs in our second reading next month. The third policy, 502.3R1, student expression and student publication code, we need to add violate lawful school regulations as part of that to match the recommendation policy. 502.4, student complaints and grievances, we need to add, we need language to include the number of days. A student should bring a complaint to the principal or superintendent within a number of days, we need to add that. And then 502.5, student lockers, no changes are needed to that policy, as it does currently match the IASB recommendation. Those are all first readings, so we don't need any action on those.
Yes, please continue to review, we'll look at those in April again for approval. At least, I really appreciate all the work here, it's made it a lot simpler.
Yes, it has.
So, looking to do first and second readings of policies for safety grants.
Yeah, so the state of Iowa offered a school safety grant for school districts that underwent a school audit, so a school safety audit. So last year, all of our school buildings underwent a school safety audit that was paid for by the state of Iowa. And if you did that, you could receive a grant for up to fifty thousand dollars per building. And that is money that the state is providing, it's federal ESSR dollars is what it is, that our state is providing for this school safety grant. We will use the grant to update some of our door security and FOB systems that we have and put in place where we don't have. The dollars, like I mentioned, they're federal dollars, so as a result, there's some board policies that we have to have in place that we don't currently. And they all involve regarding purchasing and internal controls. None of them are mandatory policies, which is why we don't have them, but they are needed for this, to receive this grant. So our grant has been submitted and approved. The last step is approve these policies, and then we'll get reimbursed for the work being done.
Any questions? Are all safety-related policies?
Yeah.
They're purchasing.
They're purchasing. They're all about procurement regarding purchasing and internal controls of involving purchasing.
Or the safety grant.
Yeah, for the safety grant, yeah.
But they will apply to any?
Yeah, any type of purchasing. We can keep them in place, probably should have them in place.
Well, that's why 22 audit houses said that we need them.
Yeah, it was in our audit for having these as well. This circuit just never had them. I would recommend the first and second readings of 705.01 and 707.05.
Someone?
Thank you, Jay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Tom, we have a motion and a second, Ed, for first and second readings for the safety grant compliance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Policies approved. Approve a fixed, approve extension for fixed-price agreement.
When you have a food service management company, this is an annual thing. It's an extension to our fixed-price agreement between us and Tahoe Food Service. The increase is equal to the CPI increase, which is twelve cents. So when the CPI increases the reimbursable amount, twelve cents, then the fixed rate price agreement. This is not, this is not what we charge for lunches or what we charge for breakfast, this is reimbursable amounts. And we will look at breakfast and lunch rates in June, as we always do. This is just our agreement with Tahoe. Increase of twelve cents, like I said, year-to-date, we're plus about a hundred thousand in our nutrition, so we certainly feel good about adding this twelve cents to the fixed agreement.
Has that typically been plus a hundred thousand, or is that...
No, and we don't think we always will be either. We really want to break even, but right now, we're in really good shape. Probably not being fully staffed is what leads to most of that.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the extension of fixed-price agreement.
Next, Tom, do we have a second?
Second motion.
Thanks, Tom, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Fixed-price agreement approved. Approve cooperative student teaching agreements, we have a couple.
We have two. We have one from Morningside University and also from the University of Northern Iowa. These are agreements between both of those two schools to provide instruction in our district while assigned a student-teacher. Having student teachers is a great opportunity for us as a district. We have had, I know, I think we have three in the elementary right now, that are great for our kids, great for our staff. And anytime we can get an aspiring teacher into our district as a possible candidate for any openings, I think is really valuable. So I would recommend the approval of the cooperative student teaching agreement for both Morningside University and the University of Northern Iowa.
Make the motions to approve these agreements.
Thanks, Jay, do we have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved. Looking at the local risk pool for natural gas.
Yep, the local government risk pool, something we entered into four years ago. It stabilizes our natural gas prices, it's intended for public entities. We pay for our natural gas premiums then out of management, which creates a general fund savings when we do that. The premium for the enrolled meters for 2024-25 is a hundred and seventeen thousand, so our premium goes down thirteen thousand than last year. I think our mild winter probably has something to do with that. So supply is up, demand is down, which is a good thing. So I do recommend the risk pool premium, again, of a hundred and seventeen thousand to be paid out of management, as it has been for the past three years.
So?
Thanks, Tom, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Jay, we have a motion and a second to approve the local risk pool for natural gas, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Agreement approved. Approving some non-certified early retirement.
Yeah, we talked about this for a few months, I think two months ago, you guys approved non-certified early retirement. We have three staff members who have applied for the non-certified early retirement. All three of these individuals have met the criteria. So together, Teresa Kieker, Bob Gridley, and Marilyn Birdy have worked over seventy-five years in the school district, which is incredible. Now, I want to thank Teresa Kieker, Bob Gridley, Marilyn Birdy for their service to the district, thank them for everything that they've done, and recommend their approval for their applications for retirement.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Brett. Jay, you have a second. So we have a motion and a second to approve the non-certified early retirement applications. Any further discussion? Except thank you again, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Retirement applications approved. Approve the 2024-25 calendar that we talked about earlier.
Yeah, we looked at the 2024-2025 calendar in the public hearing. This proposed calendar is based on instructional hours, not dates. You have the option to have a calendar based on a hundred and eighty days or one thousand and eighty hours in the state of Iowa. This is based on hours. This calendar is built with one thousand, one hundred and fifty-three and a half hours. There's a hundred and seventy-two student days, two parent-teacher conference days, twelve staff development teacher workdays, six holidays, for a total of a hundred and ninety-two contracted days. The calendar has a start date of August 21st, which is new, where the legislation allows to start during the week of August 23rd rather than August 23rd. The last day with students would be May 21st, which is earlier than this year's and last year's. So out earlier than they have been the last couple of years, a lot of hours built in. Starts on August 21st, ends on May 21st, and the calendar is based on hours, not days.
All right, any further discussion or questions on the calendar? We need a motion then to approve the 2024-2025 calendar. Thanks, Tom, do we have a second? Thank you, Brett, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Calendar approved. We have the FI 23 audit in front of us.
You guys all have a hard copy of that, the blue-bound copy that Lisa gave you, it is also linked, and we'll get the hundred and fourteen pages that way. To try to summarize the results of the audit, there were no material weaknesses in internal control funds, there are no instances of non-compliance related to financial statements, there is no interval control deficiencies related to financial statements. So that in regards to segregation of duties, we have always, that's always been included, but that is now gone from our audits. So the changes that Lisa has made with our staff and the business office has shown up as no longer a deficiency in the district. The certified budget amendment exceeded the budget amounts in the areas of instruction and support services. During the certified budget date, I talked about that we'll amend our budget in May. We did that last year, but we didn't amend it high enough. So we exceeded in the areas of instruction and support services. So that is in the, that's in the audit. No expenditures were questionable. Business transaction between the district and district officials were noted. Jay Limbaugh, board member, auto-repair tires, and Rodney Davis, substituting, Rodney as the substitute, the TA doesn't always show up, but we've always conducted business with Jack's OK Tire. Certified enrollment variances is based, enrollment were noted, our enrollment was understated by 3.1 students. Sometimes we count kids that we shouldn't, and we have to subtract those in an audit for next year. Sometimes we don't have enough counted, and that's what this is, so we'll have 3.1 added. The Department of Envisement is contacted. That's the summary of those one hundred and fourteen pages.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Brett. We have a motion for, do we have a second?
Second motion.
Thank you, Tom, so we have a motion and a second to approve the FI 23 audit, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Audit approved. Open enrollment, we've got a few to look at.
We've got fundraising on there.
Did I miss, okay.
Let her aye, through fundraising, we have two fundraisers to approve. The first is for the high school boys and girls track, selling McDonald's value cards, they sold those last year as well. The proceeds from those value cards... The proceeds from those value cards are to purchase track equipment, specifically some throwing supplies and a jumpers ramp. The second fundraiser is for our softball program through Leaning Edge. Those proceeds specifically towards a new pitching machine and middle school uniforms.
Right, the motion for fundraisers. So. Jay has a motion and we'll do Todd at the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries for approval of fundraisers. Now we're going to open enrollment.
Yep, we have six open enrollment applications that have met the guidelines for approval.
Need a motion then for approval.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Brett. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Open enrollment's approved. We'll move into the personnel section and start with resignations.
Resignations, Allison Jones from Middle School Teacher Associate, Tammy Fish, Garaging Teacher Associate, Ashley Rolfe, Lucia Wallace, Special Education Teacher, Suzanne Redding from Food Service, Jen Goomer from Transportation, and Keith Afrieders from Transportation. Keith is retired, yes.
All right, and Keith's ended the year, okay. Need a motion to approve the resignation. So. Thank you, Jay. We have a second by Tom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resignations approved. We're going to new contracts.
New contracts. Angie Garman, Middle School Special Education Teacher for next year. Ben Kern as a boys' golf volunteer. Ben Gatten, Middle School Boys Track volunteer. Molly Lighty as our homeschool assistance coordinator for next year. Trevor Arnold, Girls Golf volunteer. And Megan Tuttle as our second high school secretary. Teresa Kieker retired. Dicky Steenhorst took her position. Megan Tuttle is hired for Dicky's former position.
All right. Need a motion to approve contracts.
Motion to approve the contracts.
Thanks, Tom. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Todd. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Contracts approved. Last one we need. Thank you, everyone, for all your work tonight and great presentations also tonight. So. Motion for adjournment. Yep, we got a motion and a second. We'll go with Jay and Brett. We are adjourned.